And good evening and welcome to the June 13th meeting of the Murfreesboro City School Board. We're glad to have those of you that are with us tonight and we're glad to have those that are watching from home. At this time, I'm going to ask you to please stand as we have a young man from Black Fox Elementary, Mr. Charlie Purtle to lead us in our pledge, followed then by a moment of silence. Thank you Charlie very much. A job well done.
Yes, sir.
All right, gentlemen, you have a copy of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. King. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. All right, communications. Dr. Gilbert?
Yes, our first communication is, I'd like for Charlie to come up to the podium if he would, and if his mother Tammy would like to come too, that would be fine. We want to recognize our students and I think that this is a good time for us to do that. And Charlie certainly is one of those students that we want to recognize. Charlie, who's a student at Black Fox, as you mentioned a few minutes ago, began his work when he was seven. He noticed that some children in the community were less fortunate than others and he had a strong desire to help them. So he was determined to make a difference and he began selling repurposed street signs to purchase prescription eyeglasses for children at his school who couldn't afford them. Then seeing a growing need, he began making and selling jewelry that was made from license plates and old keys to help expand his efforts. Currently, Charlie is working directly with the Murfreesboro City Schools' chow bus, which of course we know serves children, their breakfasts and lunches across the city. And also with Marcela Tapia, with our outreach team. He's collecting items and he's filling blessing bags for families in our community. And he's already making plans for how to help more people in the future. At this time, I'd like to introduce his mother Tammy Purtle, who happens to be one of my former students at Black Fox and now is an academic coach at Black Fox. And I'd like to also introduce Charlie. So I'd like for you to tell us a little bit Charlie about what you do.
Um, I, um, well, I just buy stuff. First I started getting some glasses for my friend Willie at school and then after that I started to make street signs, selling street signs. And then after that, I make bracelets on the street signs and I started helping families now.
And he's helping families by doing weekly blessing bags for the entire eight weeks of summer. And so we have a couple of sample bags if you guys want to see them. But each family each week receives one bag full of food and one bag full of hygiene items. And so he's helping, how many families this summer?
Fifty.
Fifty families over the summer that each receive a bag. So there's a few pictures going up. The bags, it takes a couple SUVs to transport them every week, but it's been a pretty big job, hasn't it?
Yes.
So, do you want to tell them what you left for them?
Um, I left you some presents and I hope this guides you, that if someone needs help, you should, you, um, help them anytime you get to.
Well, thank you Charlie. Board, anything you'd like to say to Charlie?
Charlie, did I see an article in the paper about you the other day?
Um...
Were you in the newspaper?
Somewhere I have seen you. I think so. I think so. I was very much impressed with the article. It's a wonderful thing that you're doing and it's, uh, takes a little bit of initiative, I'm sure, on your part to make those things out of license plates.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Gentlemen?
Thank you for the key. It's a beautiful, this is what you give out to people. This is, this is great and I love the message inspired on there.
Oh.
Yeah, thank you so much for giving us that. And thank you for what you're doing. That's, there's a lot of people I know can't even come up to match that, what you're doing, so thank you.
Yeah, a second grader.
Yeah.
I mean, there are agencies that don't do this much work this fast. I mean, this is impressive, very impressive. I'm thinking Eagle Scout about age six.
My mouth is dropped open. I'm astonished. If we just heard this, I would think of a much older, wiser young man and I think this is fantastic. I do have a couple of questions. Number one, do you receive donations? How would, how would somebody donate and say, "I want to help in this project"?
Well, we have a couple, but, um, well, first we have, we have a box at our church and people just like donate some stuff at my church. We have, um, we have it at my school and stuff. We have it like, um, we have it like everywhere. And then if, if they're like donating stuff, we tell them and they don't, and they don't know where they're at, um, we just do this. Um, we tell them to meet up somewhere and then we meet up and we put it in our car.
Wow, wow.
Absolutely.
The hygiene items, are that like little hotel shampoos and soaps?
If you'd like to see them, they're actually the full, I mean, we take the whole hotel size, but we've been lucky and had enough full size of everything to be able to get full size. They're impressive bags. They're...
I'm impressed, period.
Yeah.
Where do you get, you, did you say license plates or street signs? What, what do they?
He has both.
So where do you get them?
Bracelets are made out of license plates, but he sells retired street signs as well.
I've got like three license plates in my closet that I'm going to bring because I've been wondering what to do with these license plates.
Yeah.
And, uh, that, you know, when I get, I buy cars all the time, apparently. I've got a lot of them. But I've got these license plates. And, uh, yeah, I'm gonna, man, I'm, I'm impressed. I'm blown away. I'm going to give you an applause all by myself.
And what we can do is we can put, Tammy, if you'll get with me, we can put information about the website, on the website about where that, that would be great.
All right, I'm Mike.
What do you say?
Thank you very much, Charlie. We appreciate you being here with us tonight and appreciate what you're doing.
Yes.
And the mom and dad must be spectacular too.
Well, yes, I would say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lisa?
So, to finish out the communications, it's hard to follow Charlie. But we do want to congratulate our Irma Segal students, Erin Higgins, Cameron Gallin, and Sky Roberts. They went to the National Invention Convention and Entrepreneurial Syrup Expo in Washington DC recently and competed with 300 other students from across the United States. They, uh, their teacher Angela Pope was also with them. They received second place of all fifth grade submissions, the Industry Focus Award for Sports, Games, Entertainment, and Toys, the Global Change Award for Accessibility, and the big award for the night, which was Henry Ford Museum Innovator of the Year Award. These are the girls that presented to you a couple of months ago with their EZ Swing. So they were very, very excited and we, that's just a great, great concept and congratulations to them. Also, congratulations to Amy Miller and Jennifer Clooney for writing the 2018 IDEA Discretionary Grant and getting approval for over $43,000. Congratulations to Discovery School for receiving the 2017 National Beta School of Merit from the National Beta Club. This honor is a true indication of Discovery's dedication to academic excellence, leadership, and commitment to celebrating student achievement. Also want to mention to you that United Way did kick off the Stuff the Breast program this morning. So we appreciate all of businesses and industries across Rutherford and Cannon County that are committed to helping us with school supplies for our children, as well as the children of Rutherford County and Cannon County. And that's it.
May I ask you a question pertaining to the young ladies from Irma Segal?
Yes.
Now that they have won this, what is the next step on getting these things made and out and that sort of thing? Is there a process?
Well, that's their choice. I know that the parents of the students, as well as Ms. Pope, are looking at that now as far as patent rules and everything. But the, um, the folks at this expo actually helped them along the way with this. So they're giving them some advice, from my understanding, and seeing if they can put some type of patent or kind of develop it a little bit further. Again, the parents are pretty much leading the charge on that.
I would have a hard time thinking that those people that own Shark Tank could turn down these three young ladies.
It'd be hard to turn down these three little girls anywhere. They are so excited and they really believe in what they're doing. So yeah, they are a tremendous little group of girls. Very proud of them. And they're doing a really good job of representing Murfreesboro City Schools.
Yes, yes. Consent items you have before you. Do we have a motion to approve the consent items?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. King. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. All right, action items.
The first action item is your differentiated pay plan and I'm going to let Mr. Ringstaff present that, please.
Good evening. Each year, the state requires us to come up with a differentiated pay plan and the school board must approve it each year. The last three years, we've chosen to have our differentiated pay plan to hire hard, the hardest field positions that we have at Murfreesboro City Schools, which are ESL teachers. So I'm asking you to make a motion and to approve that we will do the same for the 2017-2018 school year. Each new ESL teacher that we hire will receive a $2,000 sign-on bonus. One payment of $1,000 will be in August and I think the other will be in either, I think December, right before the winter break. We are expected to hire around four ESL teachers for this school year. So it'll be about $8,000.
Okay. Have questions? Mr. Barrett?
Have we filled these yet? Are we still looking?
Uh, I think we filled them.
Okay. This is just something the states make. I know we've had this discussion a couple times. Okay.
All right, do we have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I so moved.
Thank you, Mr. Settles. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. King. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Your next action item is public records and this is a new policy. And I just want to say publicly that I appreciate Kelly Baker's working on this. I know that she, uh, it's, it's quite a policy and most of it is state law, but she has spent quite a bit of time and it's had to be done in a hurry to get it accomplished. So, thank you, Kelly.
It's still hot. It is. Okay, this is a, as Dr. Gilbert said, it's a state-required policy. And as you know, the state of Tennessee has a very, um, strong public records law. And part of what they have passed is to require each governmental entity to have adopted by July 1st, a public records policy that is posted on your website and allows the public to understand how to access the records and what the procedure is. The legislature directed the Tennessee Office of Open Records Council, that is through the Comptroller's Department with the state, to prepare a form policy that governmental entities were to adopt. So the document you have in front of you is based off of that form policy. The revisions that have been made to it were strictly to insert Murfreesboro City Schools' names, to tailor it for school system. One thing that we can do in the policy is create any sort of waivers for fees because you can charge a fee when someone requests a copy of a public record. And they do have in the law what the fee is. It's 15 cents per page, 30 cents for a double-sided page. And it, you can charge for the labor it takes to gather the documents, redact the documents, and copy the documents after the first hour of labor. And you have to charge at the hourly rate of the individual that actually gathered the records. So, we do, already had in our existing policies, a waiver for parents requesting copies of their children's transcripts. And in our current policy, a parent could get at least three copies of their child's transcript without being charged any fees for those copies. So I have reflected that in this policy, that, that, that waiver that already existed in our current policies. So with that said, I know, I brought this to you at the last minute. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them. The forms that are attached are forms that are required under the state statute and have been prepared by the Tennessee Office of Open Records Council. And it also, the policy also states that we will adopt the schedule of reasonable charges that have been developed by the Office of Open Records Council. If a governmental entity adopts those charges, then it is assumed that your charges, there's a presumption created that your charges are fair. And so that is what I'm recommending that the board adopt. And I am recommending that you adopt it tonight in full force, under first reading, so we can have it enacted and on our website by July 1, the deadline for adoption of this policy.
Okay. All right, questions? Mr. Settles?
This is taken from the Office of Open Records Council.
Yes, it is.
And we just tweaked it a little bit.
Yes, I attended a training last week that was conducted by the Office of Open Records Council. And then yesterday, I attended another training that was for municipal attorneys. And I was holding off till after that to see if any new issues were raised that needed to be addressed in the policy before I finalized it for you. So that's why it's coming to you at this time.
Okay. Any other questions, gentlemen? Mr. Barrett?
I got a few. Um, so the fees right now are the 15 cent per page for black and white, 50 cents color. Is that what we're currently charging?
Yes, we have been, we, it's been a number of years since the Office of Open Records Council had issued their reasonable fees and charges. And when those were issued a few years back, we did adopt those. So we have not changed our fees in any way. We have been abiding by the law and charging the 15 cents per page and then the hourly rate after the first hour of labor. The charge for the color copies. You can, if someone requests the documents electronically, say on a jump drive, you can charge for the media that you are providing it to them on. But they have not issued any, um, anything relative to charging for electronic, to provide them electronically.
Like to gather them all up and put them on the jump drive?
For example, if, if we have to give someone a jump drive, you can charge for the cost of the jump drive. Recoup that cost.
Okay.
And the labor it took to gather the documents and redact the documents and provide the documents to the end of, you know, download them onto the jump drive.
Another question. So F, section 9 says fees and charges, F. And it says when fees for copies and labor do not exceed $10, fees may be waived. Where's that 10, is that from the state too, the $10?
No, that is, that is something that, I'm sorry, I didn't mention that earlier. That is a recommendation that I picked up on at my trainings. It's not required by state law that you set a threshold amount where you'll waive fees. But I'm sure you can understand, if someone comes in and asks for three or four pages or something rather quick, you have to take them to a cashier, get, you know, receipt the money, give them a receipt. So at some point, it's administratively more cumbersome to charge the fee than not. So $10 was the threshold that we had, was discussed in my trainings. And I discussed that with Dr. Gilbert. Where did we want to draw the line?
I was, it's page, uh, 16.
Page 16, section 9, under F.
I would almost say maybe $20, you know, another, you know, $10 seems even a little low for the effort, you know, to take that time and, you know, go throughout, like you said, go all through all the effort to charge them for those records. I could see maybe bumping that to $20, but that's up to the board.
And what this means is if the cost of what they've asked is $10 or less, we're not going to charge.
Exactly. No, and I, but, and I get that. So I, I don't see...
So you're saying if the cost is $20 or less, we're not charging?
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be fine with it, but...
I'd leave it at 10. And I'll tell you why. Because the first hour is free. And if the employee makes $15 an hour, you know, I just think, leave it at 10. If it's a simple, one document and it can be provided quickly, I think if you start bumping that up, you kind of might encourage, just a little, I'll call it nickel and dimed, for lack of a better word. And if we find, if we find out that this is not good enough, we can always change it.
Yeah. Mr. Settles?
And the, um, the waiver doesn't have to go through any certain, there's no more red tape. You can just say, "We're not going to charge you, right"? In other words, we don't have to fill out a waiver form.
Right, no, no.
Is that decision maker in here or is this someone in Nashville? The person who says, "I will let you go"?
That would be the records custodian. So there are two individuals under this policy that come into play. Well, it'll be multiple individuals, but the state law, when they revised it, they mandated that every governmental entity appoint one public records coordinator for your whole entity. And then you can have multiple records custodians. For example, the way ours would be set up is we would have one records, public records coordinator at a central office. We've discussed potentially having that as Joe Marlin. I didn't put a name in because that was, at the training, they suggested just stick in titles, don't use names. I'm not saying you're leaving, Joe, but that was the recommendation. And then, then your records custodians, you would probably have one at every single school, which would typically be the principal. That's who I've always looked to. And then probably one in each division. For example, someone in the HR department, Ralph would be that records custodian for HR records. Or Gary for the finance records or any of the other divisions that are under Gary. And that coordinator, when they get the request, because it funnels through them first, they send it to the appropriate records custodian, who then ensures that the documents are gathered and in a timely, efficient manner to provide to the citizen that's asking for the records. And one point under the Tennessee Public Records Act that has always been the case, but you may not be familiar with, is only Tennessee citizens may request public records. That's part of the act. So that's one of the functions of that coordinator. They serve as a gatekeeper to make sure that the person asking is Tennessee citizen, that their request is clearly understood and that it's sent to the proper person to kind of coordinate it more. And also, the revisions in the law did provide for aggregation of multiple requests that happen over a period of time. So there are some individuals that may come in and almost on a regular basis ask for records. I don't see that happening as frequently at the school system. But say, you may have some departments where a realtor may want to come in and see what permits have been pulled this month. And it's a regular basis. Well, that coordinator can then aggregate the request. Whereas every, every week when they come in, that may not pass that $10 threshold or may not pass the one-hour threshold. But if you aggregate it over a couple of months, it does and then you can charge a fee for that. Because it does take a great, great deal of time to comply with these records requests because there are hundreds and hundreds of state, federal laws, regulations that make certain information in records confidential that we have to redact from the records before we release them, especially educational records. The Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act does make students' educational records confidential. So we have a lot of information that if we had to release it, we have to make sure we've redacted and done it appropriately and not violated any other statutes. So it does take a great deal of time to comply with requests, so.
Thank you. Mr. Barrett?
Couple, a couple more. I guess I'm the one asking questions now.
All right.
Is there a timeframe? So say I submit a request, what's the timeframe after I submit the request? Like if I was Joe Public and I submitted a request?
The law says that they must be provided in a reasonable time. The law specifically says that within seven days, and that's seven business days or for the entity that you're requesting them from. So if it's the school system and someone comes in the Friday before spring break, you've got seven business days that the school is open to respond. The spring break days wouldn't count. But we have to not respond with the records, but within seven business days, we have to respond with an estimate of how long it's going to take to gather and redact them and an estimate of the potential cost for obtaining copies of the records. If someone is merely wanting to inspect records, you cannot charge them any fees whatsoever for inspection. However, keep in mind, we still would have to gather the records, potentially redact the records, which what that involves is making a copy of the original, going in and doing the redaction, either physically or through a computer, on that document, and then printing out yet another copy to allow them to inspect. And you always need, it's best practices recommended by the Office of Open Records Council to have a staff member sit with the individual while they're inspecting the records.
Would they be allowed, like, so if I came and inspected, could I use my cellphone to take pictures of those records? Or do we need to get copies, like when you're sitting there inspecting them?
The law has not addressed that issue yet.
Has not, okay.
And it was discussed at great length at both the training I went to. That is potentially an issue that may be addressed in the future by the statute because it is, um...
I could see that.
There's been a lot of time and effort spent gathering records that the governmental entity... because there are hundreds and hundreds of state, federal laws, regulations that make certain information in records confidential, that we have to redact from the records before we release them, especially educational records. The Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act does make students' educational records confidential. So, we have a lot of information that if we had to release it, we have to make sure we've redacted and done it appropriately and not violated any other statutes. So, it does take a great deal of time to comply with requests, so.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett.
Couple, a couple more. I guess I'm the one asking questions now.
All right.
Is there a timeframe? So, say I submit a request, what's the timeframe after I submit the request? Like if I was Joe Public and I submitted a request?
The law says that they must be provided in a reasonable time. The law specifically says that within seven days, and that's seven business days, or for the entity that you're requesting them from. So, if it's the school system, and someone comes in the Friday before spring break, you've got seven business days that the school is open to respond. The spring break days wouldn't count. But we have to not respond with the records, but within seven business days, we have to respond with an estimate of how long it's going to take to gather and redact them, and an estimate of the potential cost for obtaining copies of the records. If someone is merely wanting to inspect records, you cannot charge them any fees whatsoever for inspection. However, keep in mind, we still would have to gather the records, potentially redact the records, which what that involves is making a copy of the original, going in and doing the redaction, either physically or through a computer, on that document, and then printing out yet another copy to allow them to inspect. And you always need, it's best practices recommended by the Office of Open Records Council to have a staff member sit with the individual while they're inspecting the records.
Would they be allowed, like, so if I came and inspect, could I use my cellphone to take pictures of those records, or do we need to get copies? Like when you're sitting there inspecting them?
The law has not addressed that issue yet.
It's not, okay.
And it was discussed at great length at both the training I went to. That is potentially an issue that may be addressed in the future by the statute because it is, you know, there's been a lot of time and effort spent gathering records that the governmental entity can't recoup that lost time, because not only are you, the employee spending that time doing this, this service, but there, that's time away from their normal duties, so.
So, not, unclear.
Yeah, that is still a gray area.
All right. So, is there a link on the, so there are going to be a link on the website for this? I see there's a form in here.
Yes.
And this is a state form?
Yes.
So, a central office will be the clearinghouse for these, like keeping tabs of these for us?
Yes.
Okay.
Good questions. Anybody else? All right, do we have a motion to approve? Now, remember, this will be our one and only reading in order to get it complied by what the state has required in the law.
Just a quick question.
All right.
I know we're only having the one discussion, but we have several board members here. I'd like to have this for discussion in our August meeting for them, if they wanted to pick up on it, to look at it.
We probably could do it, but I think Ms. Baker needs-
No, we're going to vote on it tonight. I'm saying we could bring this up after we've, that's what I was getting at.
That's fine.
If we could put it on next month.
Sure, that's fine.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. King. No other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposition, and there is none. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Baker. I know it's been a trying several days to get this put together, I'm sure. Next item.
Your next item is to guarantee Mr. Anderson, so I'll let him talk about that.
Aw, thank you, Dr. Gilbert.
You're welcome, Mr. Anderson.
Evening, Board. This is a statutory requirement from the state of Tennessee that the fiscal agent for the district be bonded. We do this every year, and it's a million, five hundred and eight thousand, nine hundred dollar bond, and the cost of it's one thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars. Like I said, it's done every single year, and it's a state requirement, so we have to do it, and we have to just get it approved.
So, you want us to bond you for that amount of money?
I was hoping Linda would pay that much money.
Quick, quick question, and I'm, I'm on roll tonight.
Hey, that's all right.
So, what's this cost?
One thousand.
Oh, we're not, yeah. Oh, one fifteen hundred, okay. That was, that was my question.
Mr. Settle?
This has already been, is this already in the budget for next year? I mean, do we, we do it every, every?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I think he's, I think he's worth it.
Oh, gee.
And I think Linda would be crushed otherwise.
Oh, mercy, I would just be-
All right, we have a motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Settle, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposition, and there is none. Congratulations, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you very much.
Well, while you're at it, just go on to the next one too, Mr. Anderson.
Okay, the next one is, in the construction of the Black Fox Edition, we ourselves, as a district, contract to get the cabling done for the computers. It's, it, it changes every time we build something, so we'd rather have the most current stuff in it, so we do the bid on it. And this is the bid to do the cabling for it. We had, I think it was four bidders, and the low bid was Land Link of Murfreesboro for eighty-five thousand, eighty-seven dollars. And so, we are asking for your approval to go ahead and let them proceed with this cabling.
All right. Mr. Barrett?
Did this come in under what we were budgeting, or over?
That was my question.
Well, the budget document, the way the construction is done, what we do is, on things like this, is we ask the city to go, it's not part of the construction document, okay? So, we ask the city. Now, in this particular case, we're going to have some monies left in the, in it, that's going to be like seventy thousand dollars, which we'll be able to apply to it. So, it, it's, it's just not part of the regular construction document, because we do it ourselves.
Okay.
Looking at the bid, so I'm a little bit amazed at the difference between the low and the top. I mean, twenty-six thousand dollars, that's-
Quite a bit.
Pretty good change.
Well, some of them ran in at the last second, so I'm not sure they devoted the amount of time they needed to do it.
Gotcha.
And they just threw some numbers on a page, hoping to get it.
Or hoping not to get it.
Another question.
This may be true too, in some cases. All right, you have the bid in front of you. Barrett, have a-
Yeah, another one. Have we worked with them before?
You know, I don't think we have in this capacity. I think we use them on individual projects, but not from the-
But not for, but we've worked with them in the past on different things.
They're very well respected in town.
Good, all right, that's what I want to hear.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Move, some moved.
King, thank you, second.
Second.
Mr. Settle, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board.
Under Reports and Information, I'm going to ask Laurie Offit to talk a little bit
about testing night. I really think that this is something that we will do on a continuing basis, but I think that it's good for the Board to understand a little bit more about the testing procedure. And so, Laurie, if you'd come talk with us, that would be great.
Good evening.
Good evening, Ms. Offit.
All right, I think I'm the last on the agenda, so I'll try to-
Just take all the time you need.
I wanted to, I wanted to start off, first of all, with the issue of raw scores, and raw scores being reported or not reported in a timely manner to go on student report cards. We do have the board policy that if scores are not released within five full instructional days, that we can make the decision not to put them on the report cards. We did follow that policy this particular school year. Our data was late. We still haven't received two schools' data from Questar and the state. It is coming in. We're in the same boat as all the other districts are across the state, so it's nothing, you know, in particular with MCS schools. But other schools, like I said, other school systems across the state are in the same boat waiting for Questar to release the scan data. After the scan data is completed, that's when typically SDDV, which is a Student Demographic Verification System, opens. And in that process, what that allows the schools to do, assistant principals who lead testing in the buildings are able to go in and verify demographics, and the demographic data is very important because that's what our accountability is based upon. Free and reduced is checked. We also have male, female, we also have instructional availability, membership, and other items like that, that again, go to our accountability. So, we want to make sure the data is absolutely correct for our district accountability and school accountability. With the testing being delayed, and the APs are of course home, and the principals are home now because their contracts have ended, I'm in the process now of verifying all of that data for the entire district. So, I have seven schools finished. Again, I'm waiting on two more schools, and I'll be finished by the end of the week, hopefully, if, if the other school's scan data comes in this week.
So, what does that look like, Laurie? How do you, how do you go about doing that? If you would explain that, that would be great.
Yes, so-
Because I think they need to understand.
So, what that looks like is, every child that tested three through six in the building, all four of their assessment documents are scanned. So, each child, I have to verify four different levels of documentation if there is an error. Sometimes, for different reasons, there are errors. So, for example, in EIS, which is our student data system across the state, our CDC, our Comprehensive Development Students, some of the students were not entered in the EIS system in the right class codes. So, what that looks like when they scan the document is that we have a scanned document, but our student is not linked to our school system and to the school. So, what I have to do on my end is verify that they are a CDC student at the school, and I have to physically go in and enroll every child, and then I have to check all the demographics that we, we have to verify again. Gender, membership, instructional availability. So, for example, it, it took me to day, I worked all day until I left to come here, and I finished four schools. So, it's very time-consuming. Dr. Osborne's here, she can verify. One of the issues, if we have a scan data problem, is, was that kiddo, have they moved out of the district in the middle of testing? Were they absent? Of course, I don't have that particular data, so Dr. Osborne can, can attest to the fact that I tracked them down over the summer and make sure we get the right data in. She had some students who moved in the middle of testing, so then they are marked unenrolled. And that's really important, that that piece is accurate, because absence, that can add up, and that counts against our accountability. So, you really want to make sure that you have the student's demographic data correct, were they enrolled, were they not enrolled? So, it is a very time-consuming process, and, and that's what I've been doing, like I said, this week. The other part of testing, our WEDA, our access for our ELL students, that information came back today. So, I haven't had time to go through and disaggregate all of our numbers with that, but I'll get to WEDA and talk about that in a little more in-depth in just a second. But going back to the raw scores, after your student's demographic information is verified, typically you go to student-teacher connection, and that's where the teacher accountability comes in. So, teacher affect scores are based on how well the kids did on this TAN Ready test. What the state did was they flip-flopped that process because they knew that the demographic data was going to be late coming in. Teachers were going to be leaving for the summer, and by law, teachers have to sign off on the instructional availability of their students. What that looks like, if I have a student in my class, but my student has also served an hour of the day by an ESL teacher because they're an English language learner, I split that instructional time with another teacher. So, two instructional rosters have to be created, because more than one teacher has impacted that student's learning. So, those instructional rosters were completed and signed off by the school administration prior to students leaving and teachers leaving for the summer. So, again, that process kind of flip-flopped. So, after we finish the SDDV, which hopefully will be by the end of this week, we will get raw scores by next week. And this is the issue with the raw scores that you may have heard about in the public. When the raw score goes on the report card in the past, prior to 2015, that score, that grade, pretty much indicated the proficiency level on TCAP. But at 2015, we switched to what we called intra-year, which means every student is compared to their peer in that grade level for testing of that current school year. Prior to 2015, they were compared to a former cohort. So, now, we have this current accountability going on now, where all of our students are compared to one another, year to year to year. So, the raw score now is not any indication of the performance level that the student is going to have on TAN Ready. So, for example, in the past, if a student made an eighty-seven on the raw score, and that's what we put on the report card, you think of an eighty-seven as being a B. Wow, my student must be really on track, that's great. But if you look at, I, I put a packet by your seats before, and the first sheet is a raw score sheet. That is just some raw score data. Those are high school raw scores, but it's the same process that we use to come up with our, our quick scores for report cards. If you look at the top, I believe it's an English one, there are three lists for English one, three types of tests, and the bottom one is traditional. When you see that, for example, I've got a kiddo, and the raw score is going to be a forty-four. That forty-four, once I go through the state conversion formula of a cubed root process, and then you multiply by a constant, because it has to be on a zero to a one-hundred scale, that forty-four raw score becomes an eighty-seven. That eighty-seven would go on a student's report card, that is a B. However, when you look at the new levels on TCAP, or excuse me, on the TAN Ready, that eighty-seven does not mean that the child is on track, which we would perceive as grade level, or mastered, the above. That student would be considered approaching. And back in the packet, I put in a sample parent report, and we'll get to that as well. But when you read the description of the approaching student, it is a student that, according to the state, has not met the state's standards for being mastery on that grade level. So, when you look at the raw score, and you look at the conversion of a score that goes on a report card, they, they simply are just a number filler. It's no indication at all of how the student has performed. The state, because this is a new assessment, if you flip to the second page, it's the flow chart of the standard-setting process. Right now, we're on stage three. We have our revised standards, we have our assessment, TAN Ready. This summer, currently, there are a committee of educators, and what they're going to do is they're going to go through what's called standard-setting. And simply put, standard-setting is looking at the data, looking at these scale scores after all the scan data for every grade level is released in the state and to this committee. They're going to look and see, question by question, the difficulty level and rank the questions from easiest to hardest, and in between those intervals, they will set then the scales that we will have that will be, that will determine the levels of proficiency. And the new levels of proficiency are found on that parent report, the third sheet. They are below, approaching, on track, and mastered. In the past, what we had was advanced, proficient, basic, and below basic. So, those are the changes the state has made to the proficiency levels. Do you guys have any questions with any of the standard-setting?
No.
Okay. This will, this will be finalized. Mr. Campbell, did you have a question?
No, I was just going to say it's, probably a whole lot more difficult for the parent to understand than it is for us to understand.
The process is, I will say that this new state parent reports are a lot more user-friendly than they were, and they do provide a lot more information about the academic level of the students. So, I, I do believe the state did a very nice job in redoing the state parent reports that are going home. And we will be getting more in-depth of this. I know Dr. Gilbert has asked that I kind of bring together some information periodically to share with you guys as we continue the process. But those are the, like I said, the standard-setting process and the new parent report card that'll be going home. This information will not be released until the fall, when the standard-setting, if you look at the schedule, it has to be approved by the commissioner, and then the State Board of Education as well for approval. And those are those interval cuts that will get us from below to approaching, to on-track and mastered. The other pieces of test data we have, I mentioned WEDA, our access ELL test. We had over six hundred ELL students take the WEDA access between March and April of the spring. The data verification for that hit right about the time that APs were having to do the teacher connection for the state assessment. So, we, again, at Central Office, because of the timing, we verified the data for the WEDA assessment. We just got the results back today. Like I said, I haven't had time to disaggregate through, but WEDA is a consortium that Tennessee has adopted, that we're going to be using their English language acquisition standards in conjunction with our state standards to teach our ELL students. WEDA has not had a new standard-setting for several years, so this past assessment, they did do a standard-setting. That standard-setting, what it was going to do was increase the rigor between the one and the two, the two and the three, three and four, and four and five. Five is our number that we exit at the state of Tennessee for proficiency, for ELLs to then not be served in our English language program. Again, we will probably see a dip in the number of students that exited the program because of that rigorous standard-setting. However, WEDA did provide a calculator on the website, in which you can do is put the currents, current year's scores in and see that adjustment. The issue would be, if we see negative gains from last year to this year, that would be a problem that we'll address with our ELL teachers. The other assessment that we give, along with the TAN Ready, is the TCAP alt, that's for our special needs kids. It was formerly where we did the portfolios. Half of that is online. We have English and math that are online, assessed by the CDC teachers, and then we have science and social studies that are paper versions, and they are assessed as well by the CDC students. We also participated in the state field testing in areas of ELA and social studies for this school year. Next year, we'll probably flip-flop and have to do NAEP, which is the National Assessment of Educational Progress, and we won't do a field test. There will be a field test next year in science, but the state let us know this year, because we're flip-flopping between social studies field testing and science field testing, that districts will only be asked to do one, and not- districts will only be asked to do one and not the other. And since we, um, did the field testing last, or, excuse me, this past spring, um, the state did notify us that we will be participating in NAEP next spring. And NAEP only affects fourth grade for our school district, because we're just a K-six district. Um, that's a little bit about testing, um, that I just wanted to kind of hit on some of those highlights. Dr. Gilbert, is there anything else that you want me to go?
Would you explain the WEDA? Would you explain how that is administered? That, that is for our ELL students, but would you explain that? Because the time that it takes is quite a challenge, so would you?
Yes, it is.
Let me feel, understand that.
WEDA, uh, has four components of testing. It's speaking, listening, reading, and writing. The ELL teachers do, um, uh, the testing. Again, it is all online. It is a very rigorous test. Um, one of our probably lowest areas of the assessment in the four components for our kiddos, um, in the district is speaking. Um, that's one of the areas that we're going to be working on with our ELL teachers, and also the classroom teachers, to help build that particular component up. Um, it normally takes, um, we have a, a, kind of a pre-assessment of WEDA. You have to determine what level they're on, an A or a B, to proceed to the next stages of testing. It takes probably, it probably takes an hour to two hours per child to test. Um, and again, that's on and off. Um, teachers do have to, the ELL teachers have to stop their normal schedule of teaching kiddos, and it's a completely, uh, assessment-driven time. Uh, it normally takes a school, um, for example, John Pittard has over a hundred ELL kiddos. Um, it takes them the entire month that we have allotted to test all of their students, um, for that. If we have a kiddo in CDC that is also ELL, and they do have language acquisition, those CDC students as well are assessed on the WEDA. Uh, but again, the WEDA is, um, on computer, except for the component of writing, and they do have a written prompt that they have to complete, and that is submitted, and that's scored by, um, the WEDA consortium.
So, I wanted you to understand that while there's a lot of discussion about the, the TAN Ready part, that the three, the, I'll, I'll say the, the non-subgroup, uh, non-ELL students take, that we hear about how the reduction in testing has happened, I need you all to understand that those are not the only tests that are given. But the WEDA tests that are given to our ELL students, tremendously time-consuming. And then on top of that, we also have the TCAP alt for our, our, uh, disabled students. So, I, I just needed you all to get the big picture, so that when there's a lot of discussion about how we've reduced time, but for some of our students, it's not. And for our, our WEDA, the ELL teachers have to administer that, correct?
Correct.
They're trained, and they have to be tested as to whether they qualify for administering that, correct?
Correct. They have to go through training yearly to get certified to administer the test.
So, it's quite a process. And, and so, when we started talking about testing last month, I asked Lori if she would just give us gradual updates, so that you could get the bigger picture, really, of what testing is like.
Thank you, ma'am, very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we have the enrollment. Mr. Anderson?
This is the last enrollment report for the year. It is actually the report from the very last day of school. Uh, during the year, we grew a hundred and seventy-eight students. We still kept our pupil-teacher ratio right at twenty-point-one-eight district-wide, and we had a ninety-five percent attendance rate in the last month. Uh, growing a hundred and seventy-eight students was not quite as many as we had hoped to grow this year. We're thinking, or hoping, that next year, we will recoup some of the kindergartners who didn't show up this year, all over the state. So, we don't know what, what that's about, but we're hoping to grow the kindergarten a little better this year. But, um, overall, we had a growth year again, and we're looking forward to next year.
All right, thank you, Ms. Saddles.
I have a question. I think when I went to a training in Jackson, there was some discussion about the growth dollars that I was confused on. And maybe you know what I'm talking about, that it didn't go necessarily according to growth, but everybody's going to get a little bit, or something like that. Can you?
Sure.
Light rate on that.
The state is changing the model for growth within a district. Previously, years ago, you had to grow two percent before you received any growth money, and it was during the, uh, counting periods of period two, three, six, and seven. Uh, then more recently, they went down to one percent, but they lowered the amount of growth money from a pool of thirty million down to nineteen million.
Right.
This coming year, they're going to have, everybody's going to share in growth money, and they're getting back up to, towards a thirty million number. So, no matter how much you grow, you're going to receive some dollars from the state. That's good for any district who grows under one percent, which was the benchmark last year. Uh, if that had happened this past year, we would have received some growth money. Um, so, everyone in this state is very curious about how that's going to work. The districts that grow a whole lot, like the one year we really did, and Rutherford County did, and Williamson County did, they would be penalized under this format, uh, but if we're not growing quite that much, then it's great for everybody.
Yeah, because I, I think it was, some of the rural counties were like, really excited, I guess, for lack of a better term, because they're not growing as rapidly as...
Right. And the way they, the way they calculate it with period two, three, six, and seven, they, they wait that out, so they take the average of those, whereas if you grow a whole bunch in the last two or three months, you don't get credit for that. So, really, we're starting, our BEP number for next year is already below the number we currently have in students.
Right.
Because they're, they're taking the average of two, three, six, and seven.
Right.
We grew more after the holiday time this year. In other years, we've grown more at the front end. You just never know when people are going to be moving in.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Anything else coming for our board tonight? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you.